Okay, I'd like to call the meeting to order at 6:30. And I would like to remind everyone, the meeting is being recorded. Begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, so the first item on the agenda is comments from the audience. Those are our sort of guidelines. Is there anyone who would like to address the board? Not seeing anyone. We'll go on to the second item. Additions to the agenda, and Kristen, I think you wanted to move something here.
Yes, if we could, please, if we could move F3, the BHS Music Department trip request for April of 2023 up so that Mr. Air can pop on and then get to his family for this evening. Mr. Air?
All right, hi, thank you very much for moving me ahead in the agenda. I appreciate that. I'm going to go ahead and share a presentation here. Give me just a sec. All right. All right, so the music department at Bolton High School is requesting approval from the Board of Education to travel to Virginia Beach in April 2023. And the dates of the trip would be Thursday, April 20th to Sunday, April 23rd. That's the week after April vacation. And this is what the trip would include. We would have deluxe motor coach transportation throughout the entire trip from Bolton and back. We would have festivals of music adjudication and clinic for both the band and the choir on Friday. Really great opportunity for students to get some feedback from experts in the field of music education and a great opportunity for us to start rebuilding our program. We would have three nights at the Holiday Inn and Suites Oceanfront, seven meals included. Motor World is a go-kart and mini golf track that we'd go visit. It would include a day at Busch Gardens and security officer at the hotel, all three evenings, 24/7 on-call service from our travel agent at Perkins Travel and all the taxes and gratuities and a student protection plan. That's kind of like the travel insurance. Now, that doesn't include the cancel for any reason. And excuse me, will I grab my notes really quick? I just got home a few minutes ago from some interviews, so.
By interviews, everybody, he means he's on the interview committee.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
You band director.
Yeah, sorry about that. Not I was, yes, thank you for that clarification, Superintendent Heck. So, yeah, so the student protection plan would not include the cancel for any reason insurance, but we would also require families to purchase that as part of the trip cost. So here's what the overall cost would look like. It is a little bit higher than it has been in the past. The last time we did a trip like this was in 2018 when we went to Washington DC. And I believe the cost of that was about $730. So costs have risen mainly due to the transportation costs being higher, as you're aware, and also hotel costs being higher because everybody's traveling now. So that's what it would be, plus $25. We are able to get the cancel for any reason coverage from the travel agent. They just don't offer it as part of their normal package. It's something that families would purchase in addition, but we would require families to get that just in case something happens. And that would include, you know, any reason within 48 hours up to departure with 75% of the non-refundable expenses reimbursed to the family. And then, you know, if it's for a covered reason, then it would be 100% reimbursement. And I think, oh, I had one more. There it is, fundraising. We want to help defray the cost of this trip for students. And so we have several opportunities planned that we've worked on with Bolton Music Works that we're going to roll out to help students raise some money to defray that cost. And there's a list of some of those things that we have planned. And if we need to come up with more opportunities to help students out, we'll do that. Bolton Music Works also wants to help, you know, if they can with other costs, such as some of the meals on the trip that weren't included. They said that they'd be willing to help pay for some of those things so we can help to pray the cost of the trip. So what questions do you have for me?
Thank you, Dan.
Dan, I'm not sure if you indicated, I apologize if I didn't hear it. Would this be for both chorus and band?
Yes, it would be for chorus and band.
Is there a minimum number of students that have to make the trip to make it feasible?
Yes, and I'm not sure what that number is. That's a question that I'd have to check with our travel agent about. So once we, once we put the trip out there, if we don't have enough students to make it feasible, then we would have to look into other options.
We're just very excited to be bringing a field trip that stays overnight to you all so kids can have a great experience.
Do we need a motion to? You would like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the music department's April 2023 trip for the band and chorus to go to Virginia Beach.
I'll second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Abstentions unanimously passed. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Dan, for racing home and popping on.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Have a good night.
Okay, the next item is the approval of the minutes from our August 25th business meeting. Did anyone have questions or concerns about the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes submitted.
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Abstentions? Okay, approved unanimously. And next, we're looking at board committee reports. Please, finance? Some, there we go.
This trying to get off of mute.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Oh. So we met yesterday and the budget is currently 5% expended compared with 5% last year. And there were no transfers in July and August. And let's see, the budget closed out and the Board of Education is returning an unaudited amount of $425,770 to the town of Bolton. And of course, special education is a never changing landscape. And I will ask Superintendent Heck to review the 21, 22 unaudited budget in June transfers.
Okay. So in June, we had a number of transfers as we finished out the end of the year. We needed to purchase some special education supplies. We had a reclassification there, a reclassification to cover the cost of the AC rentals for freight and fuel charge that had went up. We transferred money in order to pay for the photographer for promotion. That was a reclass there. Cover price increase for Survey Monkey. We had a reclass there, also reclass to cover PD costs at Bolton Center School to fund cyber insurance readiness and gap assessment study that we did the end of June. We needed additional monies to cover the May diesel shortfall due to the cost increase. We had a cost increase to repair the BCS fire alarm panels. We had a reclass there. We had to cover the shortfall in propane due to cost increase. We had a reclass there. And then additional week of AC for Bolton Center School. We had to move monies around to cover pieces of that as well. And then we had a reclass to cover the shortfall in electricity. So that concludes our June transfers. And then, any, any questions there before I move on to the end of the year report? Okay, hearing none. If we could go to the, 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 no, the June report, if we could, please. Slide three, three down there. There we go. Actually, can you go to four, please? Sorry, I'm having trouble. Can you go up one for me? I'm sorry. Thank you. So we ended the year with an $18,146 balance in regular instruction. This was primarily driven by the fact that we would order supplies and we couldn't get them. So we're hopeful that we don't continue to have those issues this year as well. Next one, please. In student support services, we ended the year with a projected balance. We had several potential outplacements that did not come to fruition by the end of last year. However, we do have changes already that have occurred this year. And we are currently have not budgeted, do not have enough budgeted monies to cover what we currently have in front of us as a shortfall for special education. So we have to keep a close eye on that. And as we get later on the year, see where we stand. Next one, please. We had a projected balance in administration of 109,000. We had less legal bills. We were managed to do two sets of negotiations off the record, which provided some considerable savings with regards to legal fees. And we also had significant savings in our systems management line because although we had contracted with EastCon for technical onsite services to support our technology with our students and our staff, they did not have the staff. They had staffing issues last year, just like we did. And so we didn't end up paying a large sum of money for their services because they did not have staff for us to pay. And then, under operations and transportation, we had a $23,000 savings. Some of that was savings actualized because I did a great job in meeting with the transportation company because we did have one remote snow day, if you will, because we were allowed to do that last year. And since the buses didn't run, we managed and we had some other issues with some busing. So between all of that, we managed to get some money back. So that was good. Or not have to pay it out is what I should say. We could go down further, please. So in total, unexpended monies totaled $625,770. The board committed, could we go down just a little bit further, please? The board, you may recall, committed $200,000 to the Board of Finance towards this year's budget. The salaries and wages accounts for most of a large portion of this return to the tune of $360,000 because we had unfilled positions. And with unfilled positions comes unfilled need for health insurance as well. So we have a revised projected balance of $425,770 unaudited to be returning to the town that will go towards next year's budget. Any questions about this? Okay, hearing none. We do not have any transfers, as Ria shared, for July and August. And if we could just share the September update so I can just show that at this point we are projecting full expenditure of our accounts. Yep, there, thank you. And so we're expecting to spend all of our monies. As I shared, we are currently sitting at a deficit in special education as we're projecting out for the year. And as we get further into the year, I will provide further updates. If we could go to the next page, please. And the last page, please. And as Ria shared, we are 5% expended at this time. Any questions? All right, thank you very much.
The BHS Student Representative Report, please.
Hello. Can you hear me? Okay. So we started off our school year last Wednesday. And while there was a unique schedule for the first day with connections being held at the beginning and end of the day, along with slightly shorter classes, everyone seems to have adjusted well already. The hallways were also decorated for the first day and people have already started customizing their lockers. The volleyball team, boys and girls soccer teams have all won some of their scrimmages and will start having consistent games very soon. I would also like to introduce Aaron Tonialli, who was selected to be the new junior representative and will be joining us starting today.
Thank you, Michael. And hi, Aaron.
Hi, Aaron.
Hi. Okay, I guess it's my turn. So on Wednesday, August 24th, from 8:30 AM to 12:30 PM, the Bolton High School held freshman orientation. Most of the freshmen had shown up and so did a lot of bigs. And they got to show the littles around. And they got to have the time to talk about the school and some experience. And they also got to tour and meet some teachers and where their classes are. And after that, they went outside, had some games and activities to do. And then they had lunch with some grilled burgers and hot dogs. And then everyone got to leave. And it was pretty successful and many freshmen felt less nervous and more welcome at Bolton High School.
Thank you. Welcome, Aaron. Michael, nice to see you. You guys are welcome to stay on and join us for the whole meeting. But if you have other things to do, it's okay to hop off. So we need to go back to finance for a second. We need a motion to approve the June transfers, please.
Okay, sorry, I thought we were, okay. So does anyone want to make a motion to approve?
No, that was my fault.
Does anyone want to make a motion to approve the June transfers?
I'll make a motion to approve the June transfers.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thanks. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Abstentions? Okay, motion is passed. And so now, community meeting report. Does anyone have anything to share with us?
I attended the Bolton Scholarship Fund meeting yesterday. We're just getting started with our the process of getting our application ready and fundraising and everything that will lead up to next June. Our annual meeting is in October. And we did decide to move our meeting date from the first Wednesday of the month to the third Wednesday of the month because we just couldn't stay on top of having a meeting on the first Wednesday of the month creeping up on us. So our annual meeting will be the third Wednesday of October at 7:00 PM if anyone wants to join us.
Thanks, Chris. Does anyone else have something to share? Okay, now we'll go on to the Superintendent Schools' report, please.
Thank you. Mr. Miss Sully, if we could, yeah, thanks. So like I said, turn it over to Director Beth Goldsneider, who's going to share some information about ESY with you.
Good evening. So we had another very successful summer program, our extended school year program. We serviced 31 students this year from pre-K up through high school. Instruction focused, as it usually does, on areas identified in students' IP, traditionally reading, writing, and mathematics. But for some of our older kids, it's work sites and life skills and things like that. Students also receive speech, occupational, and/or physical therapy as required in the RIPs. Our attendance was really, really good this summer. So we were excited. Kids were happy to be there. We spent one afternoon making tie-dye shirts and the kids had a great time. So I think it was really great. Kids and staff all, we had a lot of staff work for us this summer. And it was just, it was a really, really great summer.
Thank you. Any questions for Beth? All right, hearing none. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Giard, who's going to give us an update from BCS. Daryl?
Good evening. So the opening of school has been very exciting. The building and grounds look amazing. And that's because of Mr. Batshamovich and the custodians. The staff returned on Monday, August 29th and had two very productive days before students arrived. And you can see there on the screen, there's two pictures at the bottom of some circles. That was a staff team building activity on the first day of school with our teacher led the staff through using different materials and specifically just circles to make their unique piece. And then we put it together for that, for that by the cafeteria for the kids to watch, look at. The positive energy for the year ahead from the returning staff and the new staff has been contagious. We then had a successful in-person meet and greet on Tuesday, August 30th. And this was the first time in a few years where the students and families walked the building, stored their classrooms, and met their teachers. Ms. Fezic and myself did a bus ride with kindergarten. We went to the center of town, went around the town green. Very few tears, and it was, I would say it was a success. It was great to connect with all the families at that and to see all the smiling faces. The first three days of school were perfect weather, which always allows for smooth bus unloading and arrivals. Superintendent Heck, Director Goldsneider, and Director Giglio were able to come and help out with unloading the buses, which was a huge help. And the families were able to take pictures and see their children come into the building. With the year off to a good start, we are now planning for our open houses on September 20th for grades six and seven and September 22nd for grades pre-K through five. Everyone on the whole is happy to be back and excited for the year. And I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Fezic to update you on summer learning and the walkathon.
Hello, everyone. So summer learning this year was completely voluntary and about 100 students participated so far. Throughout the summer, students were able to complete engaging online math and reading lessons, as well as the governor's math and reading challenges or any individual activities they decided to turn in. Some of those activities included math facts, worksheets they printed from online, book summaries and more. Students really got creative with it. Completed activities are still being collected and counted until September 15th. And then students will be able to put their earned raffle tickets toward prize options, which were funded by the PTA. So shout out to them for that. Some prize options include gift cards, stuffed animals, Legos, and more. So we are super excited to start pulling raffle tickets and give out prizes to the students who worked so hard over the summer. And then our next update from BCS is on the walkathon. BCS is really, really excited for this year's walkathon. The PTA partnered with Booster-Thon to raise money for enrichment curriculum activities by receiving donations from families and friends of students for our walkathon. The kickoff to staff is on October 11th, where our staff will learn all about the program. And then we're going to kick it off to students on October 14th. After that, volunteers from Booster-Thon will be in the building the week of October 17th. And they're going to go to each lunch wave every single day and teach a character development unit, which is super, super engaging for all of the students. They're also available to help out at arrival and dismissal and support teachers with anything they may need that week, which, when teachers heard that, they were super excited and a big fan of that part. Students can be sponsored by family and friends and win individual prizes based on how much money they've raised. And then classes can also win prizes too, based on how much money the class has raised. And they get to pick what they want to raise money for. So they might raise money for a class pajama day or a class movie day or an extra recess based on the money the class raises in total. And then this is all going to culminate into our big walkathon event, which is going to be on October 25th, where students will all go outside in grade level shifts and walk 35 laps. Each grade level shift is going to end with Daryl and I getting tied in the face. So we think that the students will be really excited about that. And we're really excited to just work alongside the PTA to ensure a successful walkathon event at BCS.
Thank you both very much. Any questions for Daryl or Millie? All right, hearing none. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Miss Sully for an update for Bolton High School.
Thank you very much. So opening a school really went exceptionally well. The custodial team of Dave, Art, Malin, Matt, Jeff, and John really did an amazing job getting everything ready. And as we started to welcome visitors in August into the building, numerous people commented to Christine and I how amazing the facility looks. So thanks to them. As you'd expect, our staff was more than ready to offer an enthusiastic welcome to students. However, Ms. Johnson and I also wanted to make sure that we developed plans to welcome our staff, both our veteran staff and our new members to the BHS community. We offered multiple opportunities for those new staff to join us before school opened for orientation meetings, time to prepare classrooms, review curriculum, and other visits to the high school. And once all the teachers were back, we started the school year, beginning to know each other a little bit with some fun team activities that Christine worked with Stephanie Noheimer, our BHS Health PE teacher, to put together. And as you can see in the picture, we proudly celebrated our math teacher and department leader Caitlin Warner, who was announced as the Bolton 2223 Teacher of the Year. And our open house on Ice Cream Social is next week at Bolton High School.
Yes, elaborating on what Aaron shared with you, our bigs and littles came in the day before school started to meet with all of our freshmen. Our freshmen had a great day. They also got their lockers and their Chromebooks ahead of everybody. So they appreciated that. We had about 90% of our freshmen actually attended our freshman orientation day. So that's something to celebrate as well. Mr. Miss Sully and I had a great time touring parents around our facilities. And parents had a chance to meet with some of our freshman teachers. Student Council is, has actually hosted its first meeting today. And they are under the new leadership of Dominique Fessine, who is a grade 10 English teacher. And we're looking to some great activities that they're planning, some hopefully some dances and some pep rallies. We talked about these activities that they'll be planning for start with Hello Week, which is in two weeks. It was an awesome first few days of school.
Thank you both. Any questions for Joe or Christine? All right, hearing none. I am now going to turn it over to Director Casper for a presentation on the BPS 2021-22 Assessment Results. Monica, thanks.
I spent so much time muted, I wanted to forget to unmute. Good evening. I hope everyone is doing well. While I get settled and start my screen share, I also wanted to reiterate what I just heard. And that is, as someone new to the district, it is an exciting time. The staff are excited. Everyone's happy. It is the most normal year we've had in recent memory. And, and it, you can tell that all the teachers, new teachers, veteran teachers, they are really feeling positive, enthusiastic about the year to come. And they are ready to dig into the work. So let me get us started. Here we go. Well, you don't need me to read the intro slide to you. But the next one might look a tiny bit familiar. This is just the slide that has been here for about some annual testing to tell. This is just the slide that has been here for about some annual testing to tell you a little bit. I'm sure you, most of you already know this. What our annual state testing, S P A C, N G S S, S A T, that particularly with S P A C and N G S S, they are required. They are useful for describing our students' achievement, measuring progress, and providing a quick snapshot. But as we know, we need multiple data points. So we would never rely on solely one measure, which would be the state test, aside from the fact that we don't even get results until June. So it is not a perfect source of guidance for our work. We do have a combination of curriculum-based assessments in addition to these and universal screens. We'll talk a little bit about that in a minute. And it is just not a substitute for all of the other measures that are used here in Bolton. So I just wanted to make that clear. I also did not put in a slide about the levels. I'll go over those quickly because the data that you are going to see are solely for students who scored at proficient and exceeding expectations. So proficient and above levels three and four. And that is where we're going to focus. The twenty-one, twenty-two assessment scores do represent the most accurate baseline we have. As a result, you are not going to see cohort data tonight. We are not going to go back to eighteen, nineteen. I just want to prepare you for that. We are looking at this year as a fresh start and a springboard for the work that we have to do moving forward. And while it is not a source for strict curricular guidance, it does help us see where some gaps are, where some areas are in need of intervention, where we need to focus some of the work that we're doing. And that combined with the assessments we have in place will help provide and inform, you know, provide information for our P L Cs. It will inform our work with professional development. And it will, we'll be able to use our time together with teachers and leadership teams to continue to move our scores. So these are the Smarter Balance Assessments results in English Language Arts. Levels three and four, beginning with grade three. And the last slide is all grades. As you can see, in almost every grade, we did outperform the state of Connecticut. We do know that there is a little bit of work that needs to be done, certainly in grade four. We're going to talk about that in another slide in a little bit. However, it's important to note that with our small numbers, that class had a grand total of fifty-eight students in it. So when we see a dip, we're talking about a small handful of kids. And one of the luxuries of being in a small district is being able to target specific students and look at their skills. So I would say that probably represents about, well, I know we can't have a fraction of a student, but about five, six and a half students. So I'll give you a minute with the slide. And a couple of seconds. So here are the discussion points that we see. We do know that Bolton outperformed the state of Connecticut at almost every grade level. We do know that some students are still struggling with fundamental skills. A key part here to keep in mind is even before pandemic times, even before Common Core, way back, grade four was a critical year when there were huge leaps made in the curriculum. And I think that that is probably why we're seeing some of the difficulty we might be seeing in grade four. Students do continue to strengthen their literacy skills in middle school. And teachers and, oops, sorry. And our teachers and interventionists will continue to provide targeted interventions for individual students. Next steps are to identify and address E L A trends. Through the P L C process, we want to support our students through our S R B I process. And maintain interventions based on the science of reading. I don't know if this came up much last year, but you may be aware, the state of Connecticut has a renewed focus on the science of reading. We are in a good place because we do have a balanced literacy approach, because we've combined the units of study with foundations to provide a solid phonics base for our youngest students. But they are going to, they have assigned particular screens that we are allowed to choose from for our kindergarten through third grade students. So part of our job this year is really determining what the most appropriate literacy screens are for our population based on those recommendations. And provide needs-based professional development for teachers based on multiple student data points. So what do our teachers need to help our students be more successful? Sure. Our math results. Again, for the most part, outperformed the state. And we have that, that critical shift that happened in grade four. Again, very few students are presented here. Discussion points for math. We had an excellent starting point. I think I see a positive trajectory. Again, outperformed the state at almost every level. We do know we have some skill gaps. We can see them in upper elementary and some early middle grades. So we are already working to plan to address some of that. Historically, again, grade four has been a huge leap. Students really make the shift from application of new learning, I mean, from acquisition of new learning to application of new learning. And that generally happens midpoint in third grade. And these students had a second grade that was cut short. And they had a third grade experience that was done in a hybrid setting. And even the beginning of last year with the C D C guidance, we had students who had to be out for ten-day quarantines. We had teachers who had to be out for ten-day quarantines. And that resulted in a high chronic absentee rate for students and some interrupted learning. So we certainly have to take these factors into consideration. Next steps, we want to continue to examine the results of our universal screening tool. We use I Ready currently in math and reading in these grade levels. And it does provide us with a fair amount of information to help us dig a little bit deeper than what we are able to see in the Smarter Balance Assessment. Use P L C time to develop formative assessments that provide actionable data. And what that means is we can look at the numbers all we want. If we can't take action based on that and drive our instruction based on that, you know, then it's not going to be as helpful to our teachers and to our students. So we want to work toward that and maintain support for our struggling learners. We have a very solid S R B I process where tier one is our core curriculum. And we have many students in, or handful of students actually, in tier two and tier three. But tier two is always more of that middle ground, which is sometimes shared by specialists and classroom teachers. That just might be taking a student group who needs a little extra work in a particular concept and working with them in a small group until they can close that gap. Continue to use multiple types of available data to identify skills in need of improvement. And it is important to note that our new math program, which has been very successful so far with our students acquiring more in-depth knowledge and conceptual understanding of the math, was introduced in eighteen, nineteen. And so teachers had like a full year with it. And then a cutoff year where after March, there was, as we know, instruction was certainly interrupted. There was a bit of instruction. We had to bring in a lot of online programs. Suddenly, one of the advantages of this program was that it was identical in print and online, unlike some programs. So our students did have access to their actual text. Next generation science, you'll see that we met or exceeded in all areas. In all grades. Next steps, again, we're using the P L C time to develop formative assessments that address the next generation science standards. Continue to use multiple data points to identify areas in need. And explore the link, this is more so in the elementary and middle grades, between reading and science achievement. This test is truly measuring students' critical reading skills and analytic skills. So the stronger we make them in reading, the stronger they'll get in science as well, at least for this assessment. Our students who took the S A T participated in the Connecticut School Day S A T. As you can see, we exceeded the levels in the state. We certainly do want to continue our math improvement. But the trajectory is very positive. The students who took the P S A T last year did outperform even this number. So I am very positive that it's going to go up and we're going to do very well. And focus areas are there. We have a brand new, except for our wonderful Teacher of the Year, who has stepped up to be an incredible academic leader. We have a new math department. And we need to support them because we know that that is an area where we want to continue to see our students improve. So I am looking forward to a chance to meet with them, find out what they feel they need. We've looked at a couple of professional development opportunities. But I would just like to share some things with them to see, and also to see who might be coming with another skill set. So two of our newer math teachers were, are provisionally certified and were in other districts. They may have had some wonderful P D, and I'm looking forward to hearing some of their suggestions because they know what they need the most. We're going to review curricula, note and address possible gaps. That is for E L A and for math. Help develop a growth mindset around academics supported by vertical alignment of skills. And that really speaks to the fact that sometimes, and especially now, we're seeing students across the country losing confidence. They feel that there are some things that they can't do. They feel like they're sort of at a crossroads. So we want to help them move past that. So they have confidence in their abilities, confidence in the possibility that something might, they might make a mistake somewhere along the line, but they can grow from that and see it as an opportunity instead of a roadblock. And then continue to focus on transferable skills, including high-level analytical and critical thinking skills, as listed in your portrait of a graduate and transferable skills. Do you have any questions?
So I would like to say before questions to, I want to give kudos to our new high school math department, who came in with Caitlin over the summer once the team was hired and already started digging in, doing curricular work before the school year even started. So we are very excited. The team hit the ground running before school even started. So I just wanted to share that with the board because that's important for you to know. Chris, I think I saw you had your hand up.
I did. Thank you. Yeah, thank you for that presentation, Monica. It was very thorough. Appreciate it. So a question I'm not sure whether is better directed to Kristen or to you, Monica. So whoever wants to field it is fine. But as I think everyone's aware, we had to cut a significant portion of our staff development budget as a result of the budgeting process this year. Are we going to have enough money to give staff the continuing education that you feel is necessary to, you know, get caught up in the ways you want to get caught up?
So I will offer that while I would have preferred that we had all of that money, we are strategically pointing where we need to use the resources that we have the most. Math being one of those areas and reading being another focus. So, you know, this may be a year where teachers in other areas can't go up to certain P Ds that they had planned on thinking that they would be able to go to this year. World Language, I'll use that as a possible example, right? So I'm just picking that, just, my internet is unstable. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So our focus is on the math and improving that, as well as Monica shared, especially since the state has new requirements for the reading, is honing in on that as well. But because we do have a balanced literacy approach, because our kids are doing well, you know, we have a strong focus there already. We do have a new instructional coach and a new interventionist at Center School as well, who brings some training from, you know, where they were previously and some different things to the table, which enables us to provide some resources and training, quite frankly, for free, right? Because they've already come with that. And we have new staff that have come to us with training from other districts that they were previously in, including Amela, who can provide P D for our staff in ways that we would not have been able to do otherwise, as well as obviously Monica and her experience, both as a curriculum director and as an elementary principal. So it's not ideal. We'd like to have all that money, but we're going to make the most of what we have. So it's a great question.
And we've already talked about some P Ds that we'd, we'd like to do. At least I know I've had that brief conversation with Amela. But also just, as just a little bit of an addition, we've been focused on some work and I have found Kristen to be an incredibly supportive superintendent and has moved some things around so that we could have some P Ds that we are sending to. We have sent, several staff members took time out of their summer to attend professional development sessions. And, you know, and I was able to because we're looking at teacher clarity this year, which is a key point. We believe that teacher clarity is student clarity, developing success criteria with students, really identifying and pinpointing our learning progressions and taking a look at that and using that to also help guide curriculum. And Kristen's been incredibly supportive there. So I think that where we see that need, we're all doing our best to make it happen.
Thank you for that answer. One other question I had was, is there a particular reason why you only shared the results or the percentage of students with scores three and above?
I think that's the way it had been traditionally presented.
I think it has. I was just curious.
If you'd like to know, sure. And just, I'd be happy to share the rest of it with you. But when you get to level two, we're always looking at vertical scarril scores because in that level two band, it's always a little bit tricky because some of those kids are a level two who have moved up from a level one. And some of them are just this close to that level three. So we really do have to, when we all meet, we have to break that apart and look at where the students fall on that scale. So that's always a tiny little bit of a gray area because they can be in a wide range. So, but if you'd like it, I'd be happy to share it with you.
Yeah, maybe at our next curriculum meeting, it would be.
I'm very excited. So we're going to have to set it on an October date.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? All right, hearing none. That concludes my report for this evening. Thank you to our great administrators for all their great information. Appreciate it.
Thank you, everyone. That was great. Onto unfinished business. We have a second read of policy five, one, four, zero. Chris, you want to review it with us?
Yeah, just a reminder that it's really just, it's an existing policy that we're simply moving over to the shipment version and moving it. It was, I think originally categorized as a six thousand series policy. And we're moving it to the five thousand series on shipment's recommendation. But my understanding is that really none of the elements of the policy have changed in any significant way, other than anything to update based on recent changes in state law.
Correct.
Does anyone have any questions or comments about the policy? Okay, we're going to need a motion to accept policy five, one, four, zero.
Happy to make that motion.
Wait a second.
Oh, second.
All right, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Okay, that passes. And now we're on to new business, Kristen resignations.
I have a couple resignations this evening. One from Tom Stages, who's a B C S P E and health teacher and cafeteria worker, Iona Callis. And I'd like to thank them both for their service to the Bolton Public Schools.
Okay, the next item is B H S twenty, twenty-three graduation dates.
So the project graduation, parents have had conversations with Joe and would really appreciate it if the board would set the graduation date early. It has been past practice to do it around January, February. But in order for them to lock in their venue and whatever performers or whatnot that they're going to be bringing in for graduation, it's better to do it now so that they have the date and can get that set. Statutorily, you are now allowed, as the Board of Education, to set a graduation date at any point in time during this school year. And when you set it, it has to be on the hundred eightieth day from when you set it. So if you set the graduation date tonight, which I hope you will, so the parents can get going on their planning, it would be for Friday night, June ninth, which would be the one hundred eighty-th day of school.
Okay, is there any discussion? Questions, comments?
As a practical matter, I mean, what happens if we have a horrible winter and we As a practical matter, I mean, what, what happens if we have a horrible winter and we have ten days that we have to make up? Is that, does that cause an issue for the seniors and getting their work done and their exams done? And, you know, if they're graduating and then they have to come back, uh, how, how would we deal with a scenario like that?
So once they graduate, they're done. If you set the date tonight, the date you set is for the one hundred and eightieth day of school as of tonight. So it's a non-issue. So, so what the high school would back into it. Seniors do their exams and whatnot before everybody else anyway at the end of school because they have graduation practice. They have senior day, you know, they have other activities that happen at the end of the year. Um, so anything else you want to add to that, Mr. Maselli?
Uh, no, thank you for bringing this forward. You know, project graduation has, every year we have the conversation about the last day. This year, um, those senior parents are extra, um, interested because it's a Friday. So with the world being what it is and travel being an issue, not just for planning project graduation, but for folks to plan travel for families, knowing that it's locked in on a Friday, was another sentiment I've heard from, from several families.
So, uh, Kristen and Joe, you're both comfortable with us setting the graduation day today?
Yes.
Absolutely. Yeah. You know, to your, to your point, Mr. Davy, you know, uh, snow days are snow days and they happen and we adjust. If there was something hugely catastrophic, a huge number of days, then we could make adjustments to some of those other things that Kristen talked about. Get creative on exam schedule, on, on rehearsals for graduation. We could, if we had a huge issue, we could recapture some days, but the way senior years have rolled out in the past, I'm very comfortable setting it on the ninth.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, we're going to need a motion for that.
I'll make a motion for, to set the graduation date.
It's Friday, June ninth.
It's Friday, June ninth.
Thank you. Second?
I'll second that.
Thanks. All right, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed abstentions? All right, motion is passed. We have a graduation date. All right, is there any?
Much.
Thank you. Is there any future business?
None at this time.
Okay, we need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion. I'll second.
Sorry, Ria.
Thank you. Okay, it is seven thirty? Good job. Thank you. Oh, wait, we have to vote. Sorry. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed abstentions? All right, now we're adjourned.
Seven twenty-three. Thank you, everybody. Just a reminder, the October meeting is on Wednesday, not Thursday.
Recording stopped.